We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the December the seventeenth, twenty twenty special call meeting of the City County Planning Commission, and I will ask Ms. Mark to please call the call.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
He told me, he texted me, he said he's having audio issues. He's trying to get connection.
Okay. Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ansel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bogart? Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. You had the December third minutes in your pack. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections? I'd ask for motion.
No.
And that is second. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ansel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren, I apologize. Let's get to you.
Epstein?
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Warren? You're muted, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry. Ms. Runner, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I'd ask that the oath be administered to each of those witnesses.
So ordered. Do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. Any questions on the subdivision reviews in the packet? No questions. Letters of credit and performance bonds, we have one item. Any question? No questions? I'd ask for motion.
No move.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Valance?
Sorry, did you say me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ansel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. And we do not have any old business or new business that brings us right into the public hearing. The first item is docket number twenty twenty sixty Z B G ten ten Properties LLC has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately one point zero nine zero nine acres located at ten ten State Street, five ten East Tenth Avenue, and a portion of zero Chestnut Street from central business to planned unit development with the general development plan. So we'll have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner.
Thank you.
We had a, we had a pre-application conference on September second for the properties you see outlined here in yellow. So this is a, I know not everybody's in the office, but for those of us in the offices, just pretty much right outside our window. It's a, is own central business, and its current use is commercial. And of course, this is the downtown area, so you have a mixture of commercial, single-family, multifamily, public, and public institutional uses in the area. Future land use map is commercial. And we can talk about this more as we go along, but the applicants this evening, they're requesting to rezone from central business to planned unit development in order to use more than fifty percent of the first floor of the existing structures for residential uses. In the central business zone, you can have unlimited residential on stories above the first floor, but on the first floor, you're limited to fifty percent. And so they would like to occupy more than fifty percent of the first floor, which necessitates this application, as well as still allowing for commercial uses on the properties. So if this were successful, the proposed land use change is a, is a mixed-use land use. The proposed density would be twenty seven point five dwelling units per acre, since they would be finishing out with a maximum of thirty multifamily residential units. Properties were originally zoned B three, which is central business, and that was converted to C B in two thousand and one. On the first page of your staff report, I'll just note that the building located at five eleven East Tenth Avenue, built in eighteen eighty, is located in the downtown local, the downtown commercial local historic district. And we will talk about that more in just a second. Going on to the second page of your staff report, we'll jump right down to site design and compatibility review. The surrounding density, residential properties in the vicinity are mainly low to moderate density, with some higher density residential uses also mixed in. Just noting landscaping and screening, landscaping and screening will adhere to the central business standards as outlined in the written concept of the P U D, which you should have in the packet. Proposed open space, if you all driven by here, which I'm sure you have, there is an existing open space area that fronts State Street that is proposed to remain. And pedestrian bicycle transit facilities, there are sidewalks on State Street and East Tenth, and there are a few GOBG transit stops also in the vicinity. I will read through the development plan conditions. There are six of them the applicants have proposed. Number one, allowed uses on the property shall be all uses allowed under central business per the zoning ordinance unless otherwise noted in narrative concept plan. Number two, the property shall include no more than thirty residential units. Number three, any new structure shall be oriented to face East Tenth Avenue, Chestnut Street, and/or State Street to complement existing structures in the vicinity. Any new structure shall be at least two stories in height and comprise mainly of brick. Number four, the developer shall maintain and preserve the existing open space. Number five, in the event there is any demolition on the property, any salvageable materials from the existing structures shall be donated to Habitat for Humanity Restore or other similar organization. Number six, the developer shall not alter the currently existing access to the property. So on the Focus twenty thirty category review, there are fifteen items that staff evaluated, and there were, I'm sorry, I forgot to count these before we started, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that are left up to your determination. This proposal generally complies with the flume and the commercial category. This body should determine if the proposed increase in the number of residential units permitted for this development is compatible with the area, and if it complies with L U one one three. L U two and L U two one, this body should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. This body should also determine if the proposal will protect nearby neighborhoods, and if it complies with L U two five. N C R two five and N C R two five three, I'll talk a little bit about that. I've already mentioned that the, a portion of the development, that, that building that fronts East Tenth is located within the downtown commercial local historic district. So it is held to certain design standards, since it is in that, that historic overlay. There are certain things that would require review by the Historic Preservation Board before they would be permitted. This property actually has gone to the Historic Preservation Board within the past couple of years. I know time flies. I can't remember exactly what year it was off the top of my head now, but, but any exterior changes or demolition would have to have that board's approval before it would be permitted. So this proposal generally complies with N C R two five and N C R two five three, as the applicants intend to develop the additional residential space in the structure located at five eleven East Tenth Avenue. And then I've already read that development plan condition, they said if there is any demolition on the properties, including this part that isn't the historic district, any salvageable materials from those structures would be donated. H N one, H N one three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a suitable infill project that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. H N two one, H N four, the planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So with that, I will go back to the points to consider that you have on page one of your staff report. The proposal is consistent with the flume and commercial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, the majority of the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. The planning commission should determine if the increased number of residential units for this, proposed for this development is compatible with the surrounding area. So that is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure the, I believe the applicants are here, and I'm sure they could answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Ramsey?
Monica, does there seem to be enough parking for all this, this many residential units?
Well, Commissioner Clark, currently under the central business zone, there, there is no parking standard.
Right, that I'm talking about for the P U D.
Since it's a P U D, they, they can make up their own standards. And so you, you may want to, depending on what their, their plans are, they may be able to speak a little more specifically to that.
Okay. Thank you, my dear.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? No questions, then we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant, please.
Thank you, Chair Runner. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Chair Runner, members of the commission, thank you. Good, good evening. This is Chris Davenport. I have with me Kyle Shirley sitting to my left. He's the principal of ten ten Properties. Thank you, Monica, for that presentation. Just a few things I would add to it, or I would point out and give you some backstory here. Kyle and his company began developing this property a couple of years ago. I think Ms. Ramsey mentioned the downtown board that dealt with the exterior work that was designed and approved, and ultimately built and improved on this property. One thing I'll make sure the commission understands is the exterior work is finished. So as a part of this PUD request, there, there is no anticipation of changing anything on any exterior. That's, and also, as Monica pointed out, we're not touching the open space. That's going to remain. So basically, from the outside, there'd be no change on what you see. What happened is when they began the interior buildout, Kyle and his contractors submitted for some building permits, and when the reviewers looked at those permits and those applications, they noted that he was, he was slightly beyond the fifty percent maximum of first-floor residential use in central business. He was close to sixty-five percent as opposed to fifty. And so what that did was that triggered the necessity for this request if he is to build that property out as the permit would provide. So it's a little bit of a tweak in that, you know, Monica pointed out the increased amount of residential space that we're requesting. We are requesting that we go beyond the fifty percent max that is normally allowed in central business for the first floor only, and increasing that to sixty-five percent. But what's kind of unique about this is, as it's currently zoned, there is no maximum for number of residential units throughout the development. He, but as a part of this PUD request, we are limiting the total number of units to thirty. So my take on that would be really, given there's no ultimate limit as, as to the number of units as of today, by agreeing to limit it to thirty, I don't think we're really increasing the residential use. We're actually providing a cap on it. But we are increasing the use of that first-floor space by fifteen percent of the square footage. That's a little bit of an unusual situation, and it's a little bit convoluted, so I would understand if commissioners have some questions about that. But that is the genesis of this PUD request. We have not added any additional uses that are not already allowed in central business. What Kyle found in developing the property frankly, is that there's just not really a justifiable demand at currently for the commercial space in the first floor. There is demand necessary for the additional fifteen percent to be utilized in the buildout for residential space. The other thing I would point out for the commission, it was important for staff that that first-floor look remain as, as if it's a commercial space. And so we are maintaining that look. As I pointed out, there'll be no changes to the exterior whatsoever. From my viewpoint, those are really what I wanted to stress to the commission. So again, we're not adding any uses that are not currently allowed. I don't feel like we are increasing the residential use as a whole. We are increasing fifteen percent of square footage used for that purpose on the first floor only. Commissioner Clark, to your question, I would point out, Mr. Shirley and his companies own all the parking that exists to the south of this parcel, which is an extensive amount of parking. So that's the one question I actually had for Kyle when this was first presented to me, anticipating that would likely be a question from the commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm happy to entertain any questions y'all might have.
Chris, Tim Graham here. I think you made this clear, but I just want to make sure I understand. The exterior of this structure is currently complete. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the, the only other question I have is entrance and exit. It speaks a little bit to that in the development plan. Can you, can you expand on that just a moment?
Yeah, so we, I think the only comment we heard back from the transportation authorities, and I think in this case, it was only the city of Bowling Green, was they did not want those altered. And so we included that development plan condition that we would not alter those. They will remain as is.
I see. Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Do we have anyone in the audience with a question? No one else online with a question? Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions? No opposition? Then I'll ask for motion, please.
Make the motion for approval of zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, docket number twenty twenty sixty Z B G. Based on the testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objectives action presented in this. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony presented presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ansel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valance? Commissioner Valance?
I got unmuted. Yes, ma'am.
It's okay. Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. The motion carried, so our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next item, docket number twenty twenty sixteen flume. Sir Ritchie Construction Incorporated has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately thirty five point six one acres located at twenty one thirty seven and a portion of twenty four twenty one Glen Lilly Road and zero Alta Vista Way from mixed-use, commercial, and moderate-density residential to industrial. And also, the applicants on docket number twenty twenty sixty one Z counting have filed to rezone that same land from residential estate in light industrial with the general development plan to heavy industrial with the general development plan. And again, docket number twenty twenty V eighteen, those same applicants have filed for a variance, and this property is currently zoned residential estate and light industrial. We'll have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner.
Thank you, ma'am.
I guess this is the last zone change staff report of twenty twenty. So I guess just wanted to tell everyone thanks for a great year, even though it's been different. One fun fact about this particular application is that the pre-application meeting that we had on March eighteenth was the first pre-application meeting we had using Zoom. So I guess we've come full circle here. And then just one housekeeping item before I get started on the staff report. Some of you, if you look at the front page of your staff report, the docket number for the zone change has a BG at the end. It should be CO. It should be docket number twenty twenty sixty one Z CO. Also, same on your motion page. Some of you may have a typo. Jessica helped catch that, but I think we had print, she had printed probably half the staff reports. And so rather than reprint everything for two letters on two pages, we thought we would just let it go. So just wanted to note that whoever makes the motion, it should be CO, not BG. So with that, I'll get started on the staff report, and Chair Runner did a great job outlining the requests that are before us this evening. There are three applications, a future land use map amendment, zone change, and variance for the properties on Glen Lilly Road and Alta Vista Way. The current zoning is light industrial and residential estate. The current use of the property is industrial and agricultural. And then again, there's a request to amend the future land use map to industrial. On page two, we'll find the reference to L U one point one point four from the comprehensive plan, which outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And in order to address the criteria required to amend the future land use map, the applicants provided the narrative at the bottom of page two. This states, "We are requesting a future land use map amendment from mixed-use commercial to industrial to match the proposed H I rezoning. The subject property will be subject to a new set of development plan conditions. The current use of the property is industrial. The requested amendment to future land use map would not result in any development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure." Moving on to page three, a touch on a few things from the site characteristics review section. Not much to report here. There's not a lot proposed to change as far as any additional structures in the immediate future. So what is shown on the exhibit before you this evening are basically just the existing structures, travel ways, parking areas, and the one thing worth noting, just in reference to setbacks, there is a variance request, and I'll get to that in just a second, but that's due to a change in configuration for the property. Under wastewater adequacy, we have noted that a private sewer line is available to the property. Moving down to site design and compatibility, under surrounding land uses, and I'll jump back to the land use map. If you'll look at this map, you'll see that the surrounding area is comprised of a mixture of uses. Several agricultural tracts are present in the area, along with single-family residential to the west of the property, and multifamily residential to the east. Under landscaping and screening, we've noted that the proposal will adhere to the zoning ordinance requirements for buffers between incompatible land uses or vehicle use areas. And there's also an additional landscaping commitment in the development plan conditions, which I'll reference here in just a second. So I think I'm actually, that's next on my list, is to touch on those. So the applicants did submit nine development plan conditions. The first relates to those increased landscape buffer requirements. Second, preservation of existing vegetation. Third, looks at hazardous materials. Four outlines prohibited uses. Five outlines a maximum building height. Six includes considerations for sinkholes. Seven addresses access to Glen Lilly Road. Eight includes environmental considerations and requirements, and nine prohibits access to Alta Vista Way. Under the Focus twenty thirty category review, staff evaluated fourteen items, found nine of those items to be in compliance. There are five items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first of those being L U one point one point one and L U one point one point two, which look at the future land use map. Next, L U one point one point three, which looks at compatibility. Next, L U two, quality of development and character preservation. And then jumping over to page five, H N one, which looks at compatibility and character of the area. In the middle of page five, you'll see the zoning ordinance reference to section four seven three C, which requires a fifty-foot setback adjacent to the boundary of a residential district, structure, or use. The variance is noted midway, I guess in the exhibit here, you'll see that call to variance number one. So the reference for this variance, this is what's being requested this evening, and that is a variance of twenty point four feet from the required setback of fifty feet. And that's due to a proposed change in the lot configuration. If you look, I don't know if you can see the hand on your screen, but there's a hatched area here, and that's currently part of the property. The property line is proposed to shift to where then that property would be added to the adjacent residential tract. So the variance is actually being requested for an existing structure, not a new structure that's proposed. Next, on page five, the reference to our variance findings from K R S one hundred point two four three and section three seven four of the zoning ordinance. Those are there for your reference, and in order to address these findings, the applicants included the narrative at the top of page six of your staff report, which states that variance number one is a request of twenty point four feet from the required fifty-foot side yard setback from a residential district for an existing structure. This request is made for an encroachment into the required setback for an existing structure as a result of the shift in the lot line as shown on the exhibit that's submitted with this application. Again, that's what's shown on the screen. It is a little hard to see, but if you focus in on this area, you'll see the variance that's being requested. I'm going to wrap up with the staff points to consider on page one. The first, the planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicant to amend the future land use map meets the criteria outlined in L U one point one point four. Next, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with the exception of the variance that is being requested. Next, the planning commission should consider if the evidence provided by the applicants justifies the granting of such variance. Next, the proposed development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And last, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all I have for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hur?
Rachel, is there going to be a fence around the heavy industrial area?
Commissioner Clark, I, I do not believe a fence is proposed. If you look in, in your staff report on page four, there are considerations for increased buffers around the perimeter of the property, but that is proposed to be a natural landscape buffer and does not include a fence.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? All other questions? To ask the applicant? Is there anything that you would like to add?
Muted, Rodney.
Rachel, I'd forgotten that we were the first Zoom pre, or application meeting. That was, that was interesting.
It sure was.
Yeah. Just one clarification, we are going to.
Excuse me. I apologize, interrupt you. This is Velma Runner. Let me get you sworn in. If you'd state your name and address for us, please.
My name, Rodney Rogers.
And your address?
Address is twenty one thirty seven Glen Lilly Road, Bowling Green.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Rachel, I was saying, we are going to fence. Rachel, I was saying, we are going to fence in the new area. So just for clarification, it'll be fenced in addition to landscape.
Rodney, Tim Graham here. Rachel touched on the need for the variance. It sounds like you're adding part of this new parcel back to a residential area, and then there's an existing structure that's already there, and that's why you need the variance. Is that correct?
Yes, Tim. What what we've done here is, of course, Stewart Ritchie has been located here on Glen Lilly Road now for 47 years and started out with Buster's mother and father, their residence here, and they they had a dairy here at one time on this 35 acres. And when Buster and Bill went in the business in 1973, they built their office here next door to Mr. and Ms. Stewart's house. And over the years, Buster had bought a few acres from Mr. Stewart and expanded the the business. Honestly, for the first 20-some years, this was all zoned agricultural. And when Stewart Ritchie was purchased by Houssens in 2000 because of the loan documents and the sale, we had the property, we had to get the property rezoned from agricultural to light industrial. Mr. Stewart, Buster's father passed away a few years ago, and his mother was still living next door. She decided to sell the house and to move away. And she still owned, or they still own 17 acres back here behind us, plus the house next door. And it only made sense for us to to buy the remaining property and the house from Ms. Stewart. Speaking of the getting to the variance that you're asking about, sometime back through the years, we had we had built a shed on the back right corner of our original property here. And unbeknownst to us, it was because of the zoning of light industrial, it was built too close to the property line. And that's why we're asking for a variance for just a small portion of the property for that one particular building.
All right. Thanks, Rodney.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Rodney, this is Rick Starks.
Hello, Rick.
How you doing? Good.
Doing good, buddy.
What type of light? Is there any type of lighting? I may have missed this, but is there any type of lighting proposed for around this area?
Rick, not not initially. What we intend to use the area for initially is to just continue to store some of our steel beams and and equipment on the area for now. I can't say that there won't initially be some lighting there, but not in the foreseeable future.
Okay. Thank you.
Rodney, you understand Rick's trying to sell you some electricity.
I know. I understand that perfectly clear.
Very cheap, man.
Will you have security out there if there's no lighting?
Well, right now, our security will, our our security is the is the means is provided by by fence right now. We have not fenced off this new area or let me rephrase that. There's one side of this of this property that backs it to the residential that is not fenced at this time. We will fence it eventually. We've got some drainage work to do there. Once the zoning, the rezoning takes place to where we have the okay to do some engineering and some drainage work. Once that's done, then there will be a chain link fence put up there. But right now, our means of security here at Stewart Ritchie are a few lights on the buildings and security cameras, but none planned for that area back there as of now.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't want anything stolen. So thank you.
We have enough problems with, we have enough problems with theft as it is. We just.
I had a feeling.
Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Do we have any opposition to these requests? No other questions and no opposition? Then I'll call for a motion, and we'll need three. The first one for the Flume Amendment, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202016 Flume. Based upon a testimony and documents presented at the public hearing, a proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 114 in the Comprehensive Plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn? Sorry, Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. Motion, the motion carried, and now we need to act on the zone change request.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditional on a general development plan, docket number 202061Z County. Based upon a testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by the compliance and the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. And now we have the third and final variance.
I make a motion to approve the request for the variance at 2137 Glen Lilly, docket number 2020V18. It's a 20.4 feet from the required setback of 50 feet adjacent to the residential structure reuse. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that granting the variance will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare, and will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow unreasonable circumvention of requirements of the zoning regulations.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Day?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. And again, the motion passed. Thank you all. Any items for discussion, Mr. Peterson?
Just got three things real quick. First, February 4th, we will have our training. Don't know exactly what I'm gonna tell you all that evening or not, other than obviously we'll do our update on our numbers for 2020, which will be quite high. I think we've done quite well this year as a community. And so we'll go over those numbers. And we'll have a few other things for you as well. On February 18th, tentatively, we're gonna have the Potter property at Nashville Road and Highland will be on the agenda. We will let you know for sure when that's scheduled. It will be by Zoom, of course, and we'll probably expect quite a few attendees at that meeting, but that'll be again, tentatively, February 18th meeting.
That'd be the only one on a Kipford docket.
That's what we're gonna probably do that if there's maybe a typical one that doesn't have much opposition, like an AgDRE, you know, one or something like that, we might stick that on there, but but ideally, it'll be the only item on the agenda. Just a quick update on the joint agreement. So Bowling Green passed the joint agreement Tuesday night at the city commission meeting. The fiscal court is having their second reading tomorrow. Woodburn, I'm not sure when they're gonna have their second reading unless Ms. Blackburn knows.
I do not know. Sorry.
That's okay. So I would assume that will be next month. And then Plum Springs, Oakland, and Smiths Grove will be in January when they have their first reading. There has been some correspondence back and forth electronically, as well as phone calls, I understand. But so there's some questions being asked and answered, so we'll just kind of monitor that and let you know as things come along, but but right now be January before we know when Plum Springs, Oakland, and Smiths Grove have their first reading to know the outcome of that. So that's pretty much all I have.
Anything from commissioners? Just want to say Merry Christmas to you all and be safe. If there's nothing else, meetings adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.